Right, we're gonna get everybody seated, we'll get started. Is this all the blue cards right here? I mean, I'll definitely go around if anybody has some questions, but I wanted to try to keep it... If anybody wants to speak at the time that we're allowed, we'll call your name up here. Alright, first off, I want to thank each and everyone for coming here this evening. It is a town hall meeting, and it is here to discuss the charter amendments, and what does it do for the city of Scott, what does it do for the unincorporated areas, and what does it do for our government. So, I'd like to first start off by thanking Councilman Castillo, who's one of the authors. He's here, and Councilman Bruce Conk, thank you for joining me here at the town meeting. So, we'll go ahead and get started. I want to welcome you to tonight's town hall meeting. If you wish to address the council on any matter related to the proposed charter amendments, like I said earlier, we ask that you please fill out a request to speak for them. Other concerns that are not related to the charter proposal could be addressed during council meetings. If you have any questions, we're definitely gonna try to answer them, and if we don't, we'll definitely get back with you. So, basically, there's a lot of things happening in our local government. From, I was on vacation and getting calls from the media about all kinds of other things going on, but we want to focus here tonight on the charter amendments, and that's why we're here. So, what has happened? It's not deconsolidation. There's rumors going around that it's deconsolidation. It's not deconsolidation at all. It's simply separating the legislative body into two separate councils. All service, as it stands today, will remain the same. You have a parish president and a mayor, that's Joe Robideau, that position stays. His term limits follow, no matter what. He has three consecutive years of terms, that stays, that doesn't change. Council members, Councilman Castillo, Councilman Kenneth Boudreaux, Councilman Bellard, and Councilman Terrio, today are termed out. They have completed three consecutive terms. Should this pass, we have an amendment coming tomorrow night? The 7th. That is gonna say that those council members are not eligible to run in the new form of government. Well, what happens to someone like Kevin Nakka, and has been your representative for two terms? Well, whether it passes or it doesn't, I'm still eligible for one term, to complete my 12 years. If it passes, I'm eligible to run one more time to complete my term in the new form of government. Regardless, it's not for us or for me to continue another 12 years, or do this so I can continue my political career. When I signed up in 2011 to be a representative, I knew going into it, three consecutive terms was the max that you could do, and that's still the same that applies. So, we're not trying to extend our political career. So, as it stands, the four current guys that are termed out will not be eligible to run, and under the new form of government, myself would be eligible for one term, Councilwoman Annette, and Liz would be eligible for two, along with Pat Lewis. Right? Okay. So, currently, we have nine council members. Five representing the city majority, and four representing the parish. I got a call that said, "Well, y'all gonna spend more taxpayer dollars, because now y'all gonna go to five more councils." We have nine today. You're adding one to the parish. Five and five, okay? So, you have nine council members currently under consolidation, LCG. You'll be going to 10. You're adding one more, and creating another district. Why is it necessary? This will both benefit the parish and city. It would allow for a greater focus of governing within each jurisdiction. It allows the city taxpayers to have a city councilperson or woman to handle the city of Lafayette issues, AKA, better known as LUS, that's going all over them right now. Right now, as it currently stands, I'm a councilman that represents probably 85, 90% rural area, unincorporated area, Scott, Dusan. But yet, I'm required to vote on a LUS matter. That, my constituency, it just doesn't line up with taxation at all, as far as the representation. So, it would allow the city of Lafayette to focus on the city of Lafayette issues, and then it would give better jurisdiction and better focus for the five new parish councilmen or women to focus on those parish issues, and concentrate on those issues, instead of being distracted with other things. The city council, like I said, would focus strictly on city issues. Parish council will focus on parish needs. Currently, LCG budget is 600, and this number's right? 633 million. Parish budget has 96 million, and the majority is dedicated property taxes. There's 12 million out of the 96 million left for the general fund. Do I need to repeat that again? 96 million and 12. So, there's 12 million out of the 96 million that we have left in our general fund, which pays for parish fire protection, supposed to, judges, and the courthouse, the district attorney's office, correctional center, and any other parish assets, such as a building. Rate in which we have moved along. We have been working on this since taking office in 2008. Some previous plans were not in the best interest of the city or the parish, but this one causes no detrimental impact. All positive. This has been an ongoing process. In 2010 and 11, a charter commission was formed, and they decided to go to the voters to totally deconsolidate. We had a vote of the people on total deconsolidation, and it failed 60 to 40. In 2013, there was a plan called the Fair and Focus Plan, and it failed at the council level. In 2015, consolidation was a hot topic, and promises were made to address it, and in 2018, we have a proposal. It's nothing new. Conversation's been going on for a long time. I gotta say that everyone in this room can probably say, "We're not consolidating." You're not. In order to have true consolidation, bye-bye, city mayor Scott, bye-bye, council Scott, bye-bye, police, bye-bye, fire. And every town would have to give up their town in order to be truly consolidated. That ain't happening. If you want to be honest, it's not gonna happen. And the vote of the people, if you live in the city of Scott, you sure ain't gonna turn away your good police protection, your mayor, your council, and things that are happening in Scott, and put it in the hands of nine people? Five people, or four people? So, consolidation never really happened. What happened was they consolidated services. You don't have a parish president and a city of Lafayette mayor. You have one parish president, so you save money on administration, council clerk, services. But not all services were consolidated. You know, so, it's not consolidation. It's about the best you're gonna have, because the towns are not gonna give up their respectful community. So, LCG and the nine council members that we have today are trying to do the best we can with a charter that was given to us. We didn't write it. We have to follow the rules, and just like everyone else. The only way it would probably work would be everybody in. Well, you can take that out, because I don't think that's gonna happen. So, what we have to focus on is how do we better represent your parish tax dollars? And how does the city residents of Lafayette get their representation on the city taxes that they pay? And that's why we're here. A committee of the council members worked on a proposal as a finance liaison team, in which we're made up of myself, Bruce Conk, Kenneth Boudreaux. We have 13 different liaison teams for this government, from public works to recreation to financing others. They all work on different issues. When a product was available, it was shared with the entire council. This is how all things are done. No one was left out of the loop. We had a balanced team of two individuals from the city, two from the parish. You had Councilman Conk and Councilman Boudreaux representing the city of Lafayette. You had myself and Councilman Castillo that was representing the parish. Why not wait? Waiting would allow six more years of what we have, which could be devastating to both the parish and the city of Lafayette. Waiting would only allow for situations to get worse. Doing this will allow the city of Lafayette to have its own council, just like Karen Crowe, Scott, Dusan, Bruce Arden, Youngsville, and every other city. It would also allow the parish to stand on its own, with no money or money, however you want to look at it, focus on parish needs, such as drainage, roads, bridges, the jail, and the courthouse, and et cetera. The recent 4.2 million that you've seen all over the news, and the shovel, and all that, do you think that was done with parish tax dollars? The answer's no. Well, how did you get 4.2 million? It was a federal grant from Hurricane Gustaf and Ike money. Does anybody know how long that was?
08.
08, 08, there you are. It's a long time. Mr. Bustani, myself, this council, administration, city of Scott, community development, stayed on this issue forever to get this Cooley done. It was one of my big initiatives, Cooley, Yoddekan, Landre Road, I can get... Things are getting done. Unfortunately, it took that long, and it was... That money was gonna be moved somewhere else if Mr. Bustani and the other people that we have on our team focused on that money. So, we got the 4.2 million, but it wasn't with local dollars. It wasn't with parish money, or, you know? But I can tell you, the city of Scott kinda helped out. They did some matching to help LCG, you know? So, it'd be nice to have money to do that without relying on the feds and just go clean the Cooley. So, we have projects that are getting done, but I don't want you to think that the parish had all his money sitting around, and we just was able to clean the Cooley, because it's not true. It came from federal dollars. It's gonna go from Fennet to Old Spanish Trail. And in the city of Scott, and myself, under the current format, or whatever format we go, we're gonna try to find money to go from Old Spanish Trail to Highway 90. You gotta go 90 to 10, okay? But those are the things that people think the parish had the money to do the projects. We didn't have the money. That's a gift from God and the federal government that we got that money. Another topic we heard a lot about is term limits. I just went over that. I don't need to repeat that. Anybody have a question about that? Everybody understand? Each council member has three consecutive terms that they can run. Our previous council, our current council, Councilman Castillo, Councilman Boudreaux, Councilman Bellard, and Terrio are all termed out. The only ones moving forward that are eligible to run is me, which is only one term, and then Councilman Pat Lewis, Councilwoman Annette, and Liz are eligible to run two. The map. The ultimate map will be the one that it has to get Department of Justice approval. Let me explain how the redrawing of the district lines work. It is driven by population, and specifically, a majority, minority population. It also has something called a deviation that cannot go over plus or minus 5%. That's how the lines were drawn. Jay, do you want to elaborate on that a little bit?
Yeah, there's a deviation, they call a deviation number that the federal government uses. When you draw districts, the reason I know about this is because we did it already in 2011. You have to start with a minority district, majority-minority district, and you move counterclockwise with your population. So, your deviation number goes from 0 to plus 5, or 0 to minus 5. And it's all driven by population. So, if you get into a heavily densely populated area, and it's a small, it's a little bitty spot on that map, but you have a lot of people in it, it drives that number up real high. So, you gotta be careful not to take in too many in one group, because it'll drive somebody else's numbers too low. So, it's a balancing act, and with five districts, it's tricky. It takes a lot of time to make sure that everybody finishes either within 5 minus or plus 5. It's complicated. I wish I had it here to show you how to do it, but the demographer has it all programmed, and he's moving things around. Those numbers are popping and jumping, and we're trying to keep it all within that plus 5 or minus 5 deviation number. So, what you see here was introduced at the council meeting. There's gonna be a couple more maps, I'm sure, coming out, because we still need to adjust some of those districts. You can see District 1, that's the one at the top. It swings all the way down to South Lafayette. Well, that's not really a realistic representation for the guy up there. So, we're trying to bring that back up to, you know, maybe, if we can, if we can. But to do that, that means I have to take out something somewhere else. And when I do that, that changes the numbers. So, it's very complicated, and it has to be done by Department of Justice rules. So, that's what you hear about the deviation numbers. So, August 7th, we should have a pretty decent map drawn up everybody to look at. On December 8th, then you get a chance to vote if it passes through council.
Thank you. The old census. 2010 census, that's why it looks like that. So, again, as your representative, I wanted to have the town hall meeting. I want to get the facts out, and I want the public to decide what y'all want to do, or where y'all want to go. I'm in favor of lining up representation with taxation. I think it's gonna be a great thing, but I'm not here to kid you. It does nothing, nothing fun-wise, money-wise, for the parish. You're not gaining any money. You're not losing anything. Your status quo. It's a bad position. But those five parish councilmen are women. Will have 100% time to focus on those issues, and will have to address those issues. Now, what I'm working on right now, probably news to him knows. I told you, I think I told, I hope I did. We'll go with it. I'm sneaking something in. Backdoor, the Portinari, a DMN or a classic. What I'm trying to say is that, how did we get the parish out of 96 million? How did we wind up down to 12? And we have some elected officials in here that represent the city of Scott, and I'm dear friends with everyone in here, and I'm not trying to be ugly. Because if you was in my shoes, you would call it like it is, and you say, "You know what? You're right." Annexation. 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 Anytime the city of Scott, and I'm not trying to pick on Scott, because it's my people, or anytime Karen Crowe, or Bruce Arden, Youngsville annex businesses and brought them into their city limits, they took 100% of the parish's revenue. They took 100% of that sales tax revenue and now became their revenue. But what happens to the parish? We still have to provide services. We still have to provide roads, bridges, drainage, fund the courthouse. We all use these services. Whether you live in the city of Scott, you live in an unincorporated area, you live in the city of Lafayette, you are a parish taxpayer, and we all use the services. Moving forward, if this thing were to pass, talking to Judge Blanchett, talking to other officials, some parishes have something in place that just simply says, "It's a parish law ordinance, that if any town annexes any future property, retail business, it's a split. That town gets 50% of the sales tax revenue, and the parish keeps its 50%," which in my opinion is the fair thing. And if that would have been in place years ago, maybe we wouldn't have been in this situation. Because at the end of the day, whether you live in the city of Scott, and you commit a crime, chief gonna bring you downtown. You're gonna go to the parish courthouse. You're gonna, you're gonna go there. So, you're gonna use those services. Go down to the courthouse and get a marriage. You're gonna have to go, and we all use the courthouse. But right now, we don't have the funds to pay for it, because annexation has killed us. So, what's the alternative? "Hey, Mr. Mayor, city of Scott, I want to go back on, retroact on all the land y'all annexed, and all the businesses you took in the city of Scott, and pay the parish half of it back." What? Can't do that. But we have to do something moving forward. This is a step in the right direction to give the parish its own voice, its own autonomy, and focus on those needs. But the bottom line is, annexation is gonna continue to happen, and I'm okay with that. But let's not forget that the parish needs money, and the parish has goals, and the parish has issues, and we still have to provide services, whether you live in Scott or you don't. So, I'm working on something in the future that says, "Anx, rightfully so, split half the sales tax revenue with the parish, and that respective town, you keep the other half." Did I talk to you about that? I might not have said that to you. But if the city of Lafayette wants some stuff, we gotta do it. Saint Tammy, so. I'm working on it. The thing is, under this current format and this current council, I can't pass that, because I have no jurisdiction or representation of Scott. You vote for me. I'm supposed to represent your parish property taxes, but I can't spend money in the city of Scott. That's not right. If you split, now you're a parish council, and now I'm representing your parish taxes. So, when I want to do a project in Scott, I don't... The law, it allows me to do that. Where currently, right now, I gotta do an intergovernment agreement worth about $10,000. It's all we can give Scott. But yet, you're a taxpayer, and you're paying parish property taxes. You live in Scott, and I can only give the town $10,000. It's not right. That if the split happens, it gives that parish council that authority to go into the town. If there's parish money to be spent, now I can come and do it and help my rep... Now, I'm representing you. Now, I'm able to do stuff with your parish property tax dollars that the city of Scott can benefit, just like the unincorporated area. Under its current format, the parish general fund, the money can only be spent in unincorporated areas? That's it. For parish. You know? So, those are some things. What happens if we don't put that policy in place and annexations keep on? Then you're gonna have a parish council that has to do what nobody wants to talk about, not even mention. You gotta raise revenue. Okay? So, keep in mind, it's not deconsolidation. You're not adding five new council members. You're not spending all this taxpayer money. You're adding one parish councilman, and they're gonna meet on a separate Tuesday to handle parish issues, and the city of Lafayette will respectfully have their own meeting handling the city of Lafayette issues, just like Scott does on Thursdays. I'm gonna come to you. So, that's the, that's the, that's the facts. That's the meat and potatoes. There's no hidden agenda. There's no council members that's trying to extend their political career. We're not trying to deconsolidate and have our own public works department. We're not trying to, we're trying to have separate representation and give the focus where it's needed. The parish is gonna have to address the issues, no different than today, but at least you have five working together, and you're handling just parish issues, instead of having nine, five representing majority of the city, and four parish guys. As it stands, if Bruce wouldn't be so nice, and some of the other council members in the city, they could outvote us all day, five for. Even if I wanted to fix fire protection, like I'm trying to do, if I didn't have the city support, they could outvote me and say, "Well, you're unincorporated areas. I don't care if they have fire protection or not," because they got five votes to my four. Okay? So, there are a lot more positives than negatives. I don't even see a negative in this. Parish was broke before, it's still gonna be broke. Don't kid yourself. But you're gonna have more authority, better representation, and it's gonna make that parish whole again. And you're gonna finally have your voice and your representation. So, now, if you live in the city of Scott or Dusan, I can go to the town of Dusan. "Mr. Johnny, I got some parish money. What projects in the town of Dusan you need some help with?" I can go do it. Right now, I can only give him a little IG, intergovernment agreement for $10,000. What are you gonna do with $10,000? You know? And it's very frustrating, because if you're not here tonight, and you're not understanding that, you would think I could spend money in Dusan and Scott by Kate. So, under its current format, it's, they never addressed. It was a Band-Aid, and it was probably good somewhat at the beginning. The parish had some money. But as annexations took place, it, you just took from the parish. And another thing is, Thomas Scott, Karen Crowe, Bruce Arden, Youngsville, all have the Walmart Super 1. People are not going into the city of Lafayette to shop. They shopping locally. So, the city of Lafayette's even dealing with the same thing. They're losing sales, retail, sales tax revenue, just like the parish is. The only difference is, ours came from annexation. Theirs came from more people in Scott, and communities are building their own, have their own restaurants, have their own stores, so they're shopping locally. They don't have to go fight Ambassador in Johnson Street. So, those are things that have taken place, and we just want to be able to give you the facts, tell you what it's gonna do, how it's gonna benefit in the long run. But if we do nothing, if we don't bring it to you, I can't, I don't know where it's going. It's a tough situation. It's not fun to be a parish councilman. It's fun, Jay. It is not fun, because you got people that want to do things. You got people that want to help, people that want to do projects, but you're hand tied. So, we'll move right along to blue cards. We have that other mic set up, sir.
You have the other one, and then the podium.
Perfect, okay. Mr. Roderick Robinson. I'm gonna come bring you the mic. Oh, you got it.
I'm concerned about who's gonna pay for all this here. Anytime you put, labor is your most expensive cost on any time. Anytime you hire anybody else, that's the most expensive, because you gotta pay that all the time. You got material, you got computers. How many people you gonna hire on this? You're gonna, they talking about switching something with the zoning, metrocoring and stuff, zoning, huh? You gotta also add into that. You got a lot of this stuff y'all talking. But I have a hard time believing that y'all coming up with this on y'all own, or did the people go to y'all and aggress this? Because I thought the people had to come to y'all first, before y'all try to pass any decision to come out to be legal.
Yeah, I can...
And I didn't see no meetings besides this meeting coming out here, but people going to the government. Is the government supposed to be for the people, or the government for himself? That's what I'm concerned about. Y'all coming up, and y'all want to put this thing in a, they have a November election, you're gonna have a December election. So, what you gonna do then? You gonna pass something with 3% of the people? That's unfair. Wait till you got a good election, get 50%, then you do. You can't say, "Everybody got shortfall, I got shortfall." You don't have the money, you just can't do it. But you don't try to make other positions, make the government grow more than the people's growing. Take care of people. Y'all don't even ask people to talk to people right no more. Y'all want to take their properties and all this. That's where y'all having, y'all buying that. Whenever you want to dig out this, you cross some people's property, y'all talk to them. No, y'all want to just go do it and fix it the way y'all want, tear it up some, and it's their people's fault. So, all this here, it costs somebody something, and it's individuals. It's not the government, because the government's gonna keep raising up one thing after another. So, how much is this cost gonna be? What y'all trying to do, the person you putting on another council, who's paying for that? Is it the rural area paying for that, or the city of Lafayette paying for it? Who started to pass this? I need to know. Is it the, is it the council starting to pass it, or did some people come to you? I'm not talking about one or two people. I think you gotta have a little bit more.
Let me, let me address one thing, real quick. One, the only person that's being hired, or that would be considered, would be that fifth parish council person. The parish general fund, the parish taxes would pay for that one additional council member. That is the only person that is being hired. I don't know what you're talking about, materials and all that. I'm just telling you, to answer your question, it's one person that would be considered that you're adding to the government, okay? And it would be coming from the parish taxes, not the city of Lafayette, because that person's not representing the city of Lafayette. It's gonna come from the parish, because that person is now considered a parish employee, a councilman. So, to answer two of those questions, one person's being hired, that's it. Nothing changes, and it's paid through the parish general fund and the parish budget. As far as for who brought this, or who contacted us, this, people have been talking about this in coffee shops forever. People have approached me about what's going on, or it's not right. We need, we need some changes, we need this and that. There were several meetings. This didn't come up overnight. This has been an ongoing issue since it was formed, when the public voted twice to not deconsolidate. So, this tweaking the charter and trying to line up taxation with representation, Mr. Robinson, has been going on for a long time. This is not something that was drawn up and just presented like that. These two guys are the authors. They have looked at it. They have brought me in. They have showed me the charter amendments, trying to understand how it would better be a better representation for our parish residents, and that's how it came about.
Okay.
What, you mentioned the Zelby Commission?
We are creating, excuse me, two separate planning and zoning commissions, the cost of that will be two times zero. Your commission members today are volunteers, and they don't receive any compensation. Uh, regarding the elections in December, you're going to have in all probability of the fire protection of on, on the December election, you're going to in all probability have a runoff for the congressional race. Uh, Mr. Higgins has four or five opponents, uh, the sheriff is going to put a parish-wide sales tax on that particular ballot. And in all probability, depending on what we do tomorrow, on the property tax for fire protection in August, you will have that on the agenda, so, we anticipate a significant voter turnout in December.
Okay, but, but every time they have something like that there, when they don't have a major thing, you, y'all vote passed up with three and four percent.
We can't help that, sir.
Huh?
We can't help the three or four percent.
Well, why don't you just-
The registered voters office back there, a- and, and people that are here tonight that haven't changed or haven't registered, call them on your cellphone, tell them they in Scott, tell them to come vote, we want, we don't want three percent.
Yeah, yeah, I should've-
We'd like, we'd like a lot more people to come out and vote, I mean, that's what I believe in, but I can't throw that.
Yeah, I should've, but just whereas in November, you have a big majority in, in November, but not in December. And y'all say, well, if you want, you know, in this year, that's how it ends up being, that's how all the other taxes done, that's how last, the other tax that failed, then it came back in, if you notice your property tax came in late December compared to all the others, because they didn't wanna give a reimbursement for the tax that they put back in to pass, but how much did that pass by? That's what I'm talking, they got a lot of people owning property around here, and stuff like that, and if you own property, you oughta better vote on it. You know, but everybody votes on it. So it's not no big deal in between people owning property, and you're talking about the city and all that, small towns, Lafayette, you know, Broussard, all this. They, they all people, everybody's people. So y'all just need to deal with the money that y'all have right now, and stop putting other stuff in the barrel. Because y'all gonna run out of money. They ain't got no money already. So, but y'all don't have a total cost on what this is gonna cost. The map drawn, the, the vote and election, how much demand is, the difference in, uh, zoning, you got a computer update, how many computers you got, do volunteers or what, are they using the same computers? And all that, they got different causes on all this. And I don't think y'all took that into consideration. Whenever y'all meet together and stuff like that, on there, y'all, all the council members met with y'all to discuss this, or did y'all leave some of them out?
We discussed it with all nine of them, including-
All, all of them was with y'all, y'all discussed everyone.
And it was at a public meeting, you can't meet all nine in one room because of the quarantine, so we met legally, ethically, three at a time.
So before this came up, you know, before you started meeting with people right now?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay, well, that's what I'm trying to understand and stuff like that, but I always thought the government's for the people, not for themselves.
We for the people, that's why we're here, thank you. The next, uh, Mr. Bill Young?
Uh, I kinda remember back when, uh, we did some annexation in Scott. At that time, Kenny was mayor, and, uh, he was annexing a lot of property, we, we took in uh, cowboys and the old Sam's Club and Camprow actually tied together was to keep Lafayette from surrounding us, there was a lot of back and forth back then, and I was under the impression, when y'all did the consolidated government, your, your woes in the parish has been ongoing for years and years and years, that it would assist you, I thought, I thought, and I may be incorrect, there was revenue sharing, because let's face it, people come from Crowley, they come through Scott to go shop in Lafayette, they come from Appaloosas, they go through Carrington, they come from New Iberia, they go through Youngsville, we're all in this together, and, uh, you know, we, I know in Scott, we worked together, we'd have animal control, and we stepped up and pay our share, because y'all, city of Lafayette was paying for it, and it was a, a big expense, so we paid our fair share in Scott towards that. But my question is, the original reason y'all came together was to assist the parish with equipment and taking care of the people in, you know, outlying areas, is that gonna, is it gonna be detrimental, or is it not gonna change?
It, it's, it's not gonna change, every, everything will, uh, everything will stay the same, you know, we'll still have public works that will complete orders for the parish council, public works that will complete orders for the city of Lafayette, we're still gonna assist, and, and me talking about annexation, look, Scott has done nothing wrong. I, you, you, every town has done the right thing, it's just policies and procedures that were in place, so I'm not mad at all one bit, or blaming, or accusing Scott that they took from. Everybody has done it, and rightfully so, because it's, it's, it's legal and it was the law at the time, so, uh, Mr. Bill, you've been on the council in Scott for a long time, and I, I love working with Scott, and I want, I wanna make sure everyone knows here, this is not a, a tack on small towns, they have done great, uh, the whole Deux-Song keeps growing and does annexation, that's a great thing for the, the taxpayers and community. It's just policies and procedures, unfortunately, at the time, most people probably thought it was revenue sharing, most people thought everybody would benefit by Scott growing, and, and, and they do, but from, uh, the tax dollars or from the parish function side, that sales tax revenue now is, was no longer being allocated to the parish general fund, it then disappeared and went to the respectful town, you know, so, um, nothing's gonna change. Everything's gonna be the same, same public work, same director, same staff, same work order, same request of service, uh, so, we're not creating any departments, we're not hiring any more people and, and trying to have a parish uh, work crew versus the city, we're not doing that, it was, it's still gonna be consolidated under one for services. So hopefully, that answers your question, and again, um, I support Scott, I'm born and raised here, so I am telling you, I am okay with annexation, I think it's a great thing, I just think that procedure and policy-wise, moving forward, we have to protect those parish dollars. And it doesn't say that Scott did anything wrong, or Deux-Song, or anybody else, it's just saying that you have to understand where the shortfall came from, how did the parish go from ninety-six million to twelve million in operation? It was just done through annexation. It wasn't against the law, nobody did anything wrong, it's just the way it was, and some other parishes don't have that in place, they have a split, they have a share. Sharing of the revenue, because it, it, it helps out everybody. Can I answer your question, Mr. Bill, is that, okay? That's it? Okay, Mr. Robert Gerard?
Well, my question was about the financial aspect of it, about how was doing this gonna solve the financial problem, and you, you answered most of that satisfaction. But I'd just like to say is that, we need, I, I grew up in Scott, in the city, and I live in the country, just roll out here now. But we, we need to back to the drawing board, and this, it, part of the reason to trouble all this is the way it was introduced to us, it just, it, it smelled the high heaven, the way it was introduced, and the way the other things with the L U S sale going on with it and stuff, just makes you not trust anything you're hearing about. What I'm heard, hearing from you tonight is like, maybe there's a little potential for, but it's still, I think it needs to go back to the drawing board, with everybody on board realizing that we all live in Lafayette Parish first. And then we live in our little town after that, and the parish has got to survive for the rest of it to survive, if we wanna stay whole, and that's it.
I, I, I agree with it. Thank you, Mr. Robert. Mr. Verno, come on.
My question was, uh, how will the rural people who live out in the country benefit from what you're proposing? You're telling me, uh, telling everyone that you're broke, and when we go into this new component, you're still gonna be broke. So you're presenting a business plan with no revenue component, so, what difference does it make? If you're broke now, and we don't have any services, and you could be broke later, and we still don't have any services, tell me why I should support your plan?
I don't disagree with you, you're right on the money. They, either way you go, you're gonna, you're not gonna create any revenue, so, how does the rural area benefit? Should the parish council find a revenue source? Should we have money in its current format? The rural area is gonna have basically better representation, and if you need to do something, you only got five, you don't have nine in five majority city overruling your parish issue.
Well, maybe you should look at the revenue component, and if annexation is your, is, is a means of acquiring revenue, then go ahead and freeze that annexation and take some of that money and have a revenue component, you have no revenue component to what you're doing, you're, you just come out and say, you've got nothing now, and we, we go through this exercise, and we still have nothing.
I'm telling you the truth.
And all I'm asking you is, tell me why I'm supporting it.
Supporting for better representation, and with the hope that five parish guys can focus just on that and find a revenue source, I'd be more than glad to have a discussion with all the towns and see if they wanna give up some of that money that was annexed, I'm okay with that discussion. It's gonna be if those towns wanna give up what they have collected, that's the question. Uh, but as far as, Jake, you have any comments on, how, how does it?
You know, you, you, we're going into this with, with no revenue stream, uh, uh, no, no, no solution. But with five parish council members sitting down, there's, there's other things besides taxing you that, that we, we not using, there, there, there are grant funds on the federal side, the state side, everyone can use, uh, everything funnels through the parish government. Your parish government's supposed to be the strongest government within that, that geographical area, your parish government's supposed to be the strongest government. Not just Florida, not even the city of Lafayette, but what we have is Lafayette parish government is the weakest in this area. Everywhere else, their parish government's strong, we as people chose to do that to ourselves, so, when you elect five parish council members, who's gonna sit at the table and say, look, we have no revenue stream coming in, nothing new, what we gonna do? Then it's their job to sit down and figure it out. That's, that's why we doing what we doing, because right now, we're not, we can't do that, we can't focus on that. We have, we have nine council members, five city, four in the parish. I was on the wrong end, I think, many, many votes, five-four, five-four, I was, I've been there, done that. If you have five parish people sitting at the table, trying to figure out what to do with the rural areas, with all the cities, and the city of Lafayette, everybody, because everybody's paying this, you know, we talk about no revenues, no revenues, everybody here pays a drainage tax, a millage, and a road millage, and a brick millage, right? All that money the parish collects for those three items is spent only in the unincorporated areas. Only, it's not spent anywhere else, that's how small of an amount of money we have to work with. Now, if you look at the parish, the unincorporated areas geographically is bigger than all the other cities put together, but the population is only seventy thousand. Okay? So. The ones who live in the rural areas choose to live the country life, don't blame you, I like it. Those who live in the city of Scott, or the city of Carrington, or city of Lafayette, prefer the city life. So, it's the choice that we make to live where we live, pay what we pay, we, we as a people decide that. A parish council gonna sit down and bring solutions to the table for the people to decide. Not the, not the politicians, not the government, the people gonna decide. They need to come up with the solutions, that's their job, and let the people decide. That, that, that's why this train is, is going out there, because we're so broke right now, it, it's, it's a joke, twelve million dollars? Ten of it is spent DA's office, the jail, and the judges. That gives us two million dollars for the entire parish to, to do anything outside of what the millage is paid for, that's it, two million dollars. Imagine that? We fixing to make a nine-hundred-thousand-dollar budget cut, because of the shortfalls. I don't know where we're gonna find that. So, yeah, we need five parish council members sitting down, putting their heads together, trying to figure this out. There's things out there that can help us, but if we don't make the step and move forward and try to fix it, then it's, it's continued, we just gonna continue to cycle. It's just that simple, either you wanna fix it, try to fix it, or just continue throwing money in, in, in the bottom of the spitting. You know, I live in the city of Carrington, I pay the taxes just like everybody else who lives in the city of Scott, don't get none of it. Don't like that too much. So that's what the parish council gonna figure out how to fix that. Okay?
And I live in an unincorporated area. And, uh, one of the things that, uh, everyone talks about is, you gotta keep, quit giving away free services. I'm an unincorporated area guy, and I get free fire protection, and I don't think it's right, so I'm bringing something. Nobody lies from now, it's okay, at the end of the day, I sleep very well, because I'm doing the right thing. And those that live in a country like me, I love it, but if you expect to have the same quality of life as the city of Scott, city of Lafayette, or any other town, you got to pay for your services. That's true. You wanna figure out how to give the parish some money to start off great with the new council? Go out and vote and support the new millage for the DA and the judge. How much money does it free up in the general fund? Eight million. So we go from two to, what, oh, two plus eight, can I get a ten? That's ten million. Let's go out in the unincorporated area, people that are only gonna be voting on the fire issue, not the city of Scott, the unincorporated area, go out and support fire protection, because you're getting it for free, go out and pay for it, to keep your homeowners low, to have better service, better protection. How much is that free in the parish general fund? Four hundred fifty dollars, I tell you what, the new parish council's working with almost twelve million dollars, pretty close. How's that? That's because you're not relying on the general fund to fund these issues, you would have a new millage dedicated, dedicated, you heard the word, dedicated to fund courthouse, who uses the courthouse? We all do, who uses the, the judges, we all do, whether you commit, we, you go through divorce, you're gonna use a judge, you're gonna use an attorney. Okay? I just found the revenue right there, but guess what, it goes to the vote of the people. Not the councilman, not L C G, we found a solution. Because there's no sales tax revenue in the unincorporated areas to continue funding a state mandate for the DA and the judges. So with those two new millages, if the community gets together and understands, and I have my phone number, you can call me, I have no reason to lie or to, to, to bluff you. If you want the parish to start off with some money and be able to bond money out, you have to support a new millage for the DA and the judges, and it relieves eight million dollars. What does the parish council can do with eight million dollars? We can go get bonds. What you wanna bond for? Well, you can identify roads and bridges and cooties that you can clean, and now, instead of eight million dollars, you're showing the federal government that you have enough money to pay that bond, so then you can go maybe get twenty million dollars and pay it over, pay it back over time. But if you don't have dedicated millages, and you don't have those identified, and you rely on the parish general fund to pay for these services, it's not gonna happen. So. That's one revenue ser- source, but nobody's gonna like to talk about it, nobody wanna do it, we even met with all your taxing authorities, and Mr. Ed Wiles in the house. He worked for Tejmane, because the public wanted this council to interrogate every other taxing district and find out, why you got three million dollars in reserve? Library, why you got thirty-two million dollars? So this council has tried to go and rededicate, but we tried to find out what they need that money for. And legitimately, Tejmane and Mr. Ed do a great job, and you know what, they need that money, because the federal law says they have to have X amount to maintain. Now, we've rededicated some millages, we've moved some money over, we just recently, what we did with the, uh, we rededicated the library, or what was the? The new drainage fund, so, we re- Health Department, mosquito and health and all, so, I mean, we, we're trying to rededicate what we can, but after you peel from the library, what other taxing dedicated millage has so much money sitting left over that you can take from, there's none. The library renewal failed. Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna do what we can. But the council's talking about coming back and maybe rededicating and trying to, to do some things, you know? So I think it's a combination of you, you spend wisely, you spend what you can, you look at where you could save, see about rededicating, but the bottom line is you have a lot of issues to vote on coming November, December. I don't like paying any taxes, just like you. I don't care. We all have tough times. We all been through personal things and we feel like we can't make it or whatever. I get it. But unfortunately, if we want better roads, and we want better drainage, and we want better protection, we have to be honest with each other and say that it's gonna cost some money. And if we go out as a public and we vote down the new millages for the DA and the judges, then, then we'll have to do whatever we gotta do. But if you wanna put revenue on the parish side and start having projects done representing your parish tax dollars, you gotta go out and support the new millages and you gotta go out and support, you know, unincorporated area fire protection. I just found twelve million dollars right there. Might cost us each a two or three hundred dollars a year, maybe. I don't know. Uh, outside of supporting those millages and stuff that's coming, you're right, Mr. Como, I, I, I can't, I can't even fathom, I can't even think about where else you gonna find the revenue. But at least you gonna have five parish guys focusing on it and not having five city guys trying to influence the parish. Cause think about it, why does a city guy wanna vote for a parish tax? He's already paying city tax. He don't wanna have to go pay parish, cause he's paying, Bruce is paying two sets of taxes. He's paying the city of Lafayette tax and a parish tax. Kevin Nakian just pays a parish tax. So if I wanna get him to support a parish tax, it means he gonna have to pay too. So sometimes those guys don't wanna support that, cause they, they paying on both ends. So, it's important that we, we understand that it does take the community, it does take people getting together, and it does take teaching. We always are gonna have to teach and be honest and, and put the facts out there. That's why I told you, I'm being honest with everyone. You're not changing the parish, the money's still broke, that's the truth. If you're asking me, how do you fix it? You go support those taxes that's coming up in November, December. Support the DA separately, support the judges, that's eight million. Support, tell your people in the unincorporated area, vote for fire protection. That's another five hundred thousand. That's sure a lot better than two million dollars I gotta operate with right now. That's just the way it was, it's not my fault. I didn't, I was nineteen ninety-six, I think I was a junior in high school. I didn't form the charter, I wasn't part of it. I inherited. I'm trying to do the best I can with what I got. And part of it is being honest with you and saying, in order to get in the right direction, you gotta, you gotta separate the issues. You gotta have a representative that's representing parish and one that's gonna handle the city of Lafayette. You have a great town in Dussault, they got their own council mayor, chief, same thing in Scott, you know? So, alright, so what I'm gonna do right now, those that didn't fill out the court, I'm gonna go row by row, and I'm gonna allow you to ask a question, and we'll get, we'll get to everybody. Bye.
Kevin, uh, you know, if this passes, uh-
Thank you, chief. If this passes, and you're talking about raising revenue. You know, I live in an area right north of Scott here, that the reason I just registered in the back there, cause it's Church Point. I didn't want anybody to know that I live in Church Point, so I never registered, but now I have to. But let me tell you what takes place there. You got two dollar stores there, Family Dollar and the Dollar Store. That's Church Point when they pay taxes there. My house, the concrete, the lumber, the material that we bought from Ornivale, all that was paid at Church Point because it was delivered in Church Point. Every subdivision that's going up, Doug Ash is delivered in Church Point, cause the left side of Highway ninety-three is all Church Point, all the way to Canton. A vehicle, a vehicle, when you go buy a vehicle or a four-wheeler, don't I pay the tax, or don't your customer pays the tax that they live in? And that goes to that.
That's all Church.
That's all from the Church Point. I would like to see if, if or if not, it does not matter. If we're gonna be on our own broke, we might as well defend ourselves and see what we can do, fight for what's ours. And I think that's a good reason to get started on that main road to Canton. It's Church Point all the way to the left. Am I right, Ms. Hazel? Does anybody live past the best stop? Do you have a Church Point address?
No, I have Scott, but that's the Austin area.
That's the Austin area. I am right, that's true. This is a serious dollars when you're building hundred fifty thousand dollar homes-
Absolutely.
And up. This is serious dollars when everybody's driving new vehicles.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Oh, go, go ahead.
But that law is, it's where it's delivered.
That's exactly what I said, in Church Point. I have a Church Point address. They don't ask me if that's Lafayette Parish.
That's just the postal address, delivered to the parish, so if the tax comes to the, should go to the parish. Um, that's just supposed like there's Scott, and the other side is not actually going to be Scott.
We, uh, Ms. Hazel, we, we would, we would need to check one, I'm gonna give somebody else some time, but, uh- They, they won't change it?
They won't change it.
That's for nine-one-one reasons?
They won't, they ain't gonna do it.
But I guarantee you, if I buy something and I say Church Point, even at my shop, I mean, if they say Broussard or Bro Bridge, even though it's somewhere else around, I send that money to Bro Bridge.
If it's a vehicle or it's a domicile address.
Domicile address.
We'll, we'll definitely check into that, that's news to me.
Church Point.
Okay. Lafayette Parish. Lee, anything? You good? Sir? You good? You want? I'm just, I'm just, I'm just going down, I'm going- Okay.
I have a comment on that, on, Bob, on this situation. Years ago when I was in the Keg beer business, I would deliver Keg beer and giant beer all the way down. If you ride a cab at the store and they deliver it over there, you pay that, uh, Scott tax, uh, Lafayette tax. But if you pay for the material on your property, that's into Church Point or whatever fabric. But if you ride a cab in Scott and you're getting wherever the store that you're back to, that's always been the issue.
Well, we, we, we can, we can check into that. Alright, moving right along. Go ahead, Bob.
Have you all figured out what the actual cost or roundabout cost on the millages that's gonna cost us living in the parish in additional? A average?
You talking about on your property tax, or talking about?
The millages that y'all want passed for your DA and of course the courthouse and fire protection, number one, fire protection.
Fire, fire protection, we, we, we still figuring out what that millage needs to be. Uh, but on a rough figure, let's say it was ten meals, and your house was appraised, or according to the assessors, let's say two hundred and seventy thousand dollars, I use mine as an example. I would probably pay roughly about two hundred and fifty dollars more a year for the tax versus paying a forty-four hundred dollar increase by going from a class five to a seven. So my insurance would go from thirty-one hundred dollars a year to seventy-five hundred.
That's because?
That is based on the fire-
Inadequate fire protection in that district.
That's based on response personnel, everything, equipment, the whole nine yards. So, it's paid two fifty, which is called a tax, or paid forty-four hundred dollars. Either way, you're gonna pay them for life, right? Cause if you got a house, you're gonna have to have insurance. The only difference is the insurance company ain't coming to put out their fire.
Well, notoriously in the parish, we've always paid more on homeowners insurance, because of-
Because of the fire rating.
Fire rating.
Correct. So, like, for example, I think Scott Chief might have went to a fire. They're like a class three, I think, Jenkins, class three. Um, city of Lafayette's a class two. Unincorporated area right now, we're at a five. You could call it a six. Five point nine is where we at. And we're gonna lose that rating for one year. Because by the time this thing gets to the voters in December, even if it passes, it's a whole nother year before you start collecting that money. So our homes in the unincorporated area is gonna go up this year for one year. But because we're bringing an election, and if it passes, then you can call PIL, you could call those people and have them come back for a new rating to show what you're gonna do with the new funds coming in, with the goal of being, getting the unincorporated area back to a five and hopefully to a four.
So the dedicated funds you're talking about would definitely be able to offset or be able to drop our rating in the parish.
Yes, and, and especially in the future, because then I would give you revenue to potentially buy some land in the unincorporated area and maybe have a station, you know? But you gotta start somewhere and, and, and you're right, it's, it's, it's one of those things, you know? And if you live in an unincorporated area, you do, you do pay higher insurance for sure, and, and that's based on the fire rating. I'm, I'm gonna come down with a-
Just keep the mic for me, pass it down.
Um, just a question. Y'all talked earlier about there's no additional cost. And, you know, I'm in agreement with a lot of the stuff y'all said, but as we go on, the city will be able to make their own ordinances. The parish is gonna have its ordinances. You don't think that this is gonna increase work in the public work side, in the planning and zoning side for their staff? And that will incur additional cost as we go? Cause they're gonna have the ability to make their own ordinances.
No, everything is, and Jay, you can chime in, everything is staying the same. So the city attorney and the parish attorney is the same guy, so on any given Tuesday night, we, we utilize the same attorney. So we, if the parish guys wanna write an ordinance, it's no different. It, it, it's, he's still gonna do the same workload and same volume. It's just that he's gonna have two separate meetings to address the issues. But as far as for, uh, attorney or, uh, writing ordinances and that, every, I mean, everything's, is pretty much gonna stay the same, it's not gonna grow.
Because I was just thinking more on like, I deal a lot with public works. Like, as the city of Scott, we have our own ordinances for drainage and development. And as, and in general, we are one parish. I personally would like to see it that the parish adopts a set of ordinances. As a municipality, you can then adopt a higher ordinance. I work a lot with drainage. You know, one of the big things I see is that a municipality to the north doesn't regulate as tight. Well, the city of Scott has twenty-five year, you know, detention, higher free board standards. That water still comes through Scott. You know, so ensuring that as a parish, we're working, uh, as a whole. That is what we are before you're, we're individual municipalities, we are a parish. So I, I'm in favor, cause I think we have a better chance of moving that portion forward, so.
No. No, I appreciate it. And, and you're right, on, on the front end, it looks like you'd be creating more work and more this and more that, but, I mean, the parish, we, 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 right now, we're currently doing city and parish all together, one meeting. And you got parish guys doing ordinances, you got city guys. So the workload as far as for the staff, everything, that's gonna stay the same. But to your point about working together, there's several times, I think, the city of Scott had asked me at a council meeting, hey, what does the parish do for this ordinance? What do, what do you have? And I think it's important that the parish council, in, in its current format, and in its potentially new format, that you continue to work together to find out what ordinances are working in this town, and how can we apply it to the parish. One of the things Jay and I worked on right when I got into office was a land use ordinance for the unincorporated area. Someone said, why do you wanna do that? It's because somebody called me and told me that they didn't want this pipe yard next to their house and wanted me to stop the pipe yard. Okay, so you're telling me, you're trying to tell me what he can or can't have on his property, and then when it came to his property, well, I don't wanna do that. Well, you know, that's, it's not right. If you're living in an unincorporated area, we wanna have nice subdivisions, we wanna have respectful things next to each other. We wanna have things that fit in place, so we adopted a land use ordinance. And that was one of the things that the unincorporated area never had. Where literally, if that wouldn't be in place, you could have a nice two hundred thousand dollar home, somebody can put a junk, uh, put a pipe yard right next to you, and there was nothing that we could have done. So, by working on those things and talking to the city of Scott and Dussault and Broussard, what are y'all doing for ordinances? What are y'all restrictions? I mean, I think that's important, that that dialogue continues all the way through. And if there's some bigger things that the parish can do, then I think we need to do it. One of them is that annexation thing.
Kevin, I told you a little bit earlier, I'm kinda confused, still can't answer. For years, I've heard Mr. Conks and other people that mostly in the city saying about how the city's been taken advantage of by the parish. They, they need their own representation because they're being taken advantage of by the parish government. That's not right, that's what they've been saying for years and years and years. Tonight, I'm hearing Mr. Castile saying, he was on the short end of a five-four vote with the city councilman, shortchanging him. I'm confused. I really am. I don't think you and Mr. Castile ever voted against something that would be beneficial to the city, because y'all had more people in the parish when it became a city issue.
I've always supported the city of Lafayette.
And I think Mr. Castile did the same thing. I, I, I would assume that Mr. Conks would have done the same thing, but that's not what I'm hearing.
No.
That's not what I'm hearing at all. So I hear nine people that were voted to govern the corporate, the, the parish government, the city of Lafayette.
It's one of those things. We, we get long break, this council does, but what happens to the future council? Once someone gets involved, was there, was there, was there, was there motive, you know? So, to, to answer your question, when you heard those comments, it was, it was, and Bruce, you can chime in, a lot of the things that the parish was short on, it was, we, there's, there's an allocation process right now. And a lot of the allocations, the city was picking up the slack on where the parish didn't have the money to meet. So the allocation, so we were digging into city coffre funds, not by just allocating, by shifting over, well, they're doing ninety percent more or sixty percent more work in the city than the parish, so the split's not fifty-fifty. You know, so we're gonna put more on the city, which, that's more money coming out of the city because the parish isn't obligated. But to the city's fault, they were annexing and not splitting the revenue with the parish. So it's, it goes both ways, but I understand what you're saying. Um, for me, I don't, I don't think it's, uh, I mean, I, I can tell you, cause I've been through seven budgets, I, I know that the city of Lafayette, through the allocation process, is floating and helping the parish on what it can. And the parish is trying to pay the city back through the allocation, but I mean, it's, it's, that's, that's where that came from.
But it seems to me like this is going to help Mr. Conks and plenty of the people, that board is gonna help the parish, because now they can concentrate on the city, take care of that issue, and saying, now y'all deal with your problems, I don't wanna have to sit down there and dip it in my pocket to help you out.
But rightfully so, cause I could tell you right now.
I think that's what this is all about.
Well, it's about a lot of things, but, I mean, it, it, it is true. Prime example to your point, Mr. Currie, I, I, I'm gonna throw it out there, cause we talked about it. That is what your city of Scott people are doing for the unincorporated area right now. The city of Scott is dipping into their coffres to go help the unincorporated area that is not paying.
Rightfully so.
Rightfully so, wrongfully so. The parish residents should be taking care of their issues. It should not be falling on the city of Scott to go rescue a fire in the unincorporated area, when those people, that's not right, cause what happens when fire number two breaks out, fire number three? Then what? You got the, you think a taxpayer in Scott would be happy to know that their fire trucks and firemen is in the unincorporated area? And they got businesses or homes burning in the city of Scott and there's no representative for Scott there? That's, that's the same concept why the city doesn't like the parish to keep digging into their fund, because they're not paying at all.
They, they're taxed on it, uh, their, their taxes paid in Scott's sales company. We're not the most shocked in Lafayette. I mean, I, 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 I don't see that, that hard line, I know it's tough, but I don't see that hard line that we should not build. Because we, we all in a big, in a big club, there's just some people in charge of it, okay?
Primary reason that I'm looking for a city council for the city of Lafayette is to control city tax dollars. That does not remove our obligation to participate in the funding of Lafayette Consolidated Government. That will continue. We will have an obligation, we have a responsibility to fund the continued consolidated government. to fund the continued consolidation of functions. So we will continue to pay our fair share. More important to me is the ability to determine on our own what capital improvement projects, what we do with our sales taxes, how much will we pay our police and fire protection? There's a statistic which, about three months ago, I started using. Over half of the parish, nearly half of the parish population does not live in the city of Lafayette. Yet, they have representation on a council which governs the city of Lafayette. That's not fair. Broussard, Carroncro, Duson, Youngsville, Scott, all have their own councils. That's all we're asking for. We're not gonna abandon the parish. We have an obligation to consolidate a government to pay our fair share. So we're not billing out. We just wanna be treated fairly.
Moving on.
Okay, my question was, y'all were saying this election is in December. Why, if you wanted the people to be there to vote, you put it in November? December is the runoff and you're not gonna get many people to go vote if they're not involved in the runoff? Why not November, when the general election, if you wanted the people to really vote for it?
It all had to do, and Jay, it all had to do with the timing. There's state laws and certain notices that you have to get out before you can have an election. So we were behind the eight ball on getting the proper paperwork. Attorneys, the lawyers, had to get all the paperwork filed with the state in order time. You can't just say, I wanna have an election on this date. There's a notification that's gotta go out. There's all certain things that have to go out. And we knew that we were talking about potentially putting an unincorporated fire millage out there in December. Plus, you had some runoff, so we figured you have a November and a December. There was no way to put it all in November.
I'm just afraid the eight ball's gonna get you.
Well, it's got us regardless. I mean, there's nothing that this council could've done, I mean, to change it.
You still have a parish-wide election in December.
What's that?
You can still have parish-wide election in December.
That's right. You still have a parish-wide. Yeah. You, you still, you're gonna have two par, well, you're gonna have a parish-wide election in December and you're gonna have a unincorporated area. You'll have two elections in December and how many in November? Your town's gonna have a big one in, you know, you have all the stuff in November. You got the parish.
Okay, I just more, let's have a comment. You know, we keep talking about the unincorporated area, you know, running out of money and no money and all this. And I've been hearing this and seeing this. The news media have had a lot of articles on it and, okay. Well, what I never understood is, and I've sat on all these meetings. I was on, I was mayor then, when, for the consolidation. And all the municipalities voted no. And so did the unincorporated area. How was the city of Lafayette able to consolidate them and not us? They took in the unincorporated area, they consolidated it. And I know y'all can't answer that, but I can't help but wonder about that. You know, I mean, look at what we're facing now, you know?
Actually, there is an answer to that. The state legislature is the one that mandated that the parish of Lafayette have a charter commission to look at the consolidation of only the city of Lafayette and the unincorporated area. It specifically said you will not include Broussard, Carroncro, Duson, Youngsville, Scott. That was the state legislature that told us that. The other thing that they told us we could not do is that we could not prohibit the other municipalities from expanding. So from the get-go, there were restrictions placed on how we were going to address consolidation of Lafayette. It was the city of Lafayette, unincorporated area, and then don't put any restrictions on the other communities. So that's how it was mandated by the state legislature.
Okay, well, I mean, I didn't doubt that it was done illegally or anything. That's not what I was implying. I just couldn't understand it, you know? Because they voted one way and it's like their vote was just not no good.
I agree. The only way you'd have to do that, but say, it's my opinion, the state legislature would've had to come in and create an annexation map and say, Scott, this is the furthest you can go. Youngsville, this is the furthest you can go, vice versa. And then you would've had to have the vote of the people say, do you wanna debacle everything and just put it all on the one? I mean, that would've been the right vote to have the people vote. But like he's saying, the state legislature is the one that controlled that.
And I have only one other comment. The annexations that you're talking about, that we had a lot of annexations in Scott at that time. Well, guess why? Metro COVID. The people wanted to come into Scott. They were asking to come into Scott.
They still wanna come.
So, hello?
I wanna come too.
That's it. I rest my case.
You did good. You did great. Ms. Dof.
Hi, Kevin. My question is this, if this does pass, how do we know that Kevin's district money stays in Kevin's district account and not go to the general fund?
It's the same like it is. Kevin doesn't have a district one account. I don't have one.
Now?
Now I don't have one. And even if this is created, they don't give a checkbook to the respectful council members and say, hey, you have this amount of money. It doesn't work that way. They look at the parish issues, the drainage, they rate it on which is critical. The other thing we have to keep in mind, people, is, you know, you were awesome to work with.
Thank you.
We needed to go clean a cooling, we needed to get on her property. We went, she said, absolutely, you can come, whatever you need to do to help improve my drainage. Well, if every citizen was like that, we could probably get a lot more coolies and a lot more things done. The fact of the matter is, most people don't want government on their property and they don't sign the certitude for the government to go do the work. So what happens? That project gets held hostage. So then they move to the next project. Well, which resident or property owners are gonna allow us? That's one. Number two is, do we have the plans in place? Has the engineers done the work? Do we know what we're gonna be doing on this property? So there's just a long process that you gotta go through to go clean a cooling. But it starts with the landowner saying, yes, Mr. Ed Song, Mr. Ed Wildback there. Hey, come on, Kev, look, come with the track. Because I mean, we've done some great things in this district that, you know, it was, it was done partially because we had a little bit of money. And number two, that project was high on the list. And number three, y'all had signed the certitudes for us to go do the work. If we don't have the certitudes, we can't, we can do it. I can use a state statute that says I'm coming regardless, but we'd like to get the consent of the property owner before we go do it. But to answer your question, no, there's no district one or district two. There's no money allocated, all based on project certitudes and what's available at the time.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
This fire district you keep talking about.
Yes, sir.
Are you telling me you're gonna put fire stations all over the parish?
No, what I'm telling you, we're gonna utilize our current structure. City of Scott, Broussard, Youngsville, Carroncro, Duson, volunteers, Judys and Milton. And we, as a parish in an unincorporated area, are gonna help with personnel and we're gonna pay for part-timers and we're gonna upgrade the equipment. And should there be enough money left over and we can allocate some land and potentially build a substation, that would be the long-term goal. We're not demanding the fire department, we're not trying to create a new fire department. We're simply trying to have revenue that we can go to the city of Scott and Carroncro, Youngsville, and those volunteers and Judys and Milton and say, we're gonna help you. Because right now, they have no personnel. So if you ask yourself, why is two, three different towns responding to a garage fire? It's because the guy in Scott that's supposed to help out the parish, he's going with a fire truck with two people on it, can't fight the fire. Then the unincorporated area has no fire hydrants. What you relying on? You rely on a tank or a water truck. They're twenty years old. So we don't wanna reinvent the wheel and hire a private fire chief for the parish. We're not doing none of that. That's simply gonna give us dedicated revenue so we can get personnel. We can get the training. It's all on points, but it's personnel, it's training, it's fire equipment. The city of Scott got cut over sixty-seven percent from the parish.
That's what I read.
You know, so it's putting it back in place and it's giving those towns and those volunteers the help that they need dearly to protect those people in the unincorporated area. But to answer your question, sir, no, we're not gonna go build stations. We're not going to hire, you know, a new fire chief to do the parish. We're not, we, we just need the revenue to hire people so that when the fire happens, they showing up prepared. They got more than two people fighting the fire. You have a tanker truck that's showing up. And eventually, if you look at this map, well, it's hard to tell, but north Carroncro, west Scott, Austin, Duson, Judys, that area is the largest, most vulnerable unincorporated area for fire protection. Broussard and Youngsville only have two percent unincorporated area. Well, why is that? Because it was none but farm land. And when those farmers, the landowners were getting farm dollars or they could've got a triple the money on a development, they sold the land, they developed. And now Broussard and Youngsville combined might, might respond to 200 calls combined. City of Scott's responding to 500. Carroncro's right behind them. And that's unincorporated area now. That's not city of Scott calls. That's, that's just the unincorporated area. So, no, we're not building stations.
I have one other comment. You know, you're talking about only putting one more person home, so you'd have five and five. Why we, the parish, we're gonna be stuck with Roga Do. You know, I mean, how come we can't have a home? I know it costs, but I mean, why are we stuck with it?
Hey, I think that's a great question. You know, I, I agree with you, but you know, the truth is, and Jay had one of their meetings, it was someone that's against taxes and against government. And he said, well, why you don't go to a seven-member council? But wait a second, you want us to, you want us to spend more money and our two?
Well, I don't mind the money. I mean, you know.
I hear what you're saying. I hear what you're saying.
I just don't think he oughta have his finger on both.
I understand.
That's a conflict of interest where I come from.
I understand. And, and...
If you can change everything else, how come we can't change that?
We just didn't have the, didn't have the votes for it. And then the parish, the tax, you think it's an issue now? Just, just wait if you had to have a parish president. Then, then the argument would be, well, Jay Castile's not always gonna run for parish president or Kevin Knockan's gonna run. Then it would've been the politicians trying to make their way.
That's been since day one. You know, it's always an argument.
Yeah.
Just gotta find a way to win.
I got you. Give me some time. Give me four more years.
I mean, he seems to be going around the back door to get all this LUS crap done.
I hear you. No comment on that. Let's keep going. I appreciate it though. Mr. Troy.
I wanna beg to know, what Angel said earlier. The consolidation came 25 years ago. I was running a candidate in Ray. And my position was, we'd be here where we're at at this moment now. I think I was the only candidate who ran for. But the people in folks in Lafayette convinced everybody how much money to save. But the only conclusion that I can arrive, that they got tired saving money.
That's a good one, Mr. Domo. I appreciate that. That's a good one. Bruce, you like that? That was a good one, huh? All right. Okay, Mr. Troy.
I'd like to say thank you very much, Bruce, Jay, Kevin, and Mr. Kyle back there. Thank y'all for being here tonight. You guys have a very, very difficult job. I don't have so much of a question, but more of, I guess, a comment. Each of you, if you would just for a moment, imagine your own personal situation. You were forced, absolutely mandated, that your expenses would start rising. Just think about that for a second. You had no control over it. You had to put out more money. New requirements, new restrictions. Whatever the situation is, you were forced to pay more money. How would you deal with it? How, no, your own personal, your own personal at home, you were forced to start paying more. Your house payment doubled. By rule, your insurance. Whatever the situation, if that happened, how would you deal with it? Think about that just for a second. And there was no way to increase your income. No way. How would you manage it? Just sit on that for a little bit, okay? Okay? So what we're finding now, because I wear a few hats here in Scott, and I see a lot of information behind the scenes that the general public doesn't look at. But I'm seeing the insurance group, a rating agency, come into the communities of Lafayette, all of the other cities in the parish, the parish itself, which I think the parish rating right now is a five. They're mandating to the parish that they have certain pieces of equipment. If they don't do it, their rating will change, not for the good, but for the worse. So what the people are going to experience, because that rating is going to change, the people are gonna experience their insurance company saying, wait a minute, you guys were a five and we were only charging you this. Now you're a seven because you don't have the fire protection that you are required to have. You're now a seven, so your cost, and you gave an example earlier, your cost is now this. So you're gonna have to pay for it out of pocket. That's a, that's a tough, tough thing to swallow. It's very difficult. I was laughed out of a room because I attended one of these meetings and said, who the hell are these people telling us what our ratings are gonna be? And they said, that's the law. These people are very specific. Fire chiefs and engineers and insurance rating groups. You have a tremendous amount of people at the table dictating and mandating what you have to have for your city and for your parish. And I, so I made another silly comment. I said, well, why can't we just tell them not to do that to us? And it's just not gonna happen. They are full authority. They mandate what it's going to be in the communities. So we have to sustain it. We have to be able to fund those things, some kind of a way. We have to be able to pay for that. That's just on the fire protection side, okay? On the parish side, the state of Louisiana mandates that the parish pay for the courthouse, the DEA. They are forcing them to be able to provide services. They're forcing them by new rules and laws for safety. You have to build these rooms this way. Your elevators have to be this way. You have to have this much security. They're putting down so much expenses that was not there before. Doesn't matter how much money you had in the coffers, that was not there before. It is very, very, very difficult for them to be able to fund such a thing. I attended that new school on the south side. They have bulletproof glass that's mandated that they have these things. These people are experiencing so many expenses that have never been there before. How do we manage it? How do we manage it as a community? We're being forced to do things that we never, that we don't wanna do or we never thought we'd have to do. That money has gotta come from somewhere. So I guess we have some choices to make as to where the funds are gonna come from as a community. Do we sit on our hands and do nothing? Or how do we, how do we come about putting all of this together and paying for these things? You talked about additional revenue. And maybe there's some things we could tweak and find some monies with addresses or whatever. Or we can go to the community. One of the examples that was put up to us was pay a couple of hundred dollars a year or let the, let that, that insurance company that you pay your mortgage charge you two or three thousand dollars a year. So I put that on the table and I said, well, if I pay a couple of hundred dollars extra a year and I have all of these wonderful fire services, it cost me a couple of hundred dollars, but now I have a low rating and I have great fire services, okay? If I choose not to pay a couple of hundred dollars a year and my house, as a homeowner, my house insurance rises a couple of thousand dollars a year and I don't get the fire services because they can't, they still can't do it. They don't have the money to do it. Again, we have to educate ourselves and look at everything very, very, very closely. I would like it, I wish, one of our town meetings, we would've had Mr. Como here because he, he has a tremendous amount of information on how the taxes are managed. I mean, he is the man when it comes to that. So again, just a comment for us to all really dig deep and find out all of the details behind the details before we make a vote. Don't vote on emotions. Please, don't vote on lack of knowledge and misinformation. Please, 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 dig deep and find out all of the information and gather yourself, do some homework before you go and make a vote. Thank you, Troy.
Appreciate it. And the other important thing is, go vote. Let's, let's, let's be real. I mean, go vote, that's gotta be, you know, but like... I mean, go vote, that's gotta be, you know, but like you said, let's get the facts. Let's make sure you understand what you're voting on. Put the emotions aside and, and, and vote on your community. And realize that you're not the only one that lives here. You have children, you got grandchildren and, you know, um, this, this affects everybody now and in the future. So, all right, next?
I, I do have comments, I do have questions too. I'm sorry I came in a little bit late too, so I didn't get the first part of the meeting. But I heard what Mr. Basaral was saying and I'm kinda confused as to that because whenever it's mandated to the city and parish, those prices are mandated down to us. So definitely, we've been paying higher taxes, um, higher insurance. That never goes down. So Kevin, the fire rating, who is proposing this? Or who is stating that the fire rating is going up? Because we've been, we live in the same subdivision. I built my house there ten years ago. My insurance, homeowners' insurance has been going up every year. Fire rating's been staying the same, you said. But yet, now it's gonna change and now I'm gonna go from twenty-eight hundred dollars a year to forty-four hundred?
Yeah, um, I'm on the fire and police liaison team. I've been on it for seven years. And we have been able to hold a class five rating because when the parish had some money, we bought some CDs, radios. We've tried everything we can to keep it down. Fire chief is the one that came to us and said, "Listen, they're coming here and chat, if, if fire chief chats on you, sits on the, on, if he's here, which I think he left for a fire probably, but, uh, he can help back up what I'm trying to say is, they went to fire chief Benoit and got with the fire parish association and they grade them. They grade them on response time. They grade, they grade them on personnel. And we saved it four years ago. If your insurance is going up, it's not because of the fire rating in the last couple of years. It might have went up for whatever reason. Matter of fact, depending on what kind of coverage you have, whether you got hurricane deductibles or you got wind and hail.
Well, I'll talk to you about that a little bit too. Because I've been having state form for, James and I have been married for twenty-five years. We kept my policy that I had when I was fifteen, automobile. And then, of course, when we got married and built our own. I called the insurance commissioner that's been in office for how long now? Anyone know how many years? Quite a long time, a, a career politician. And he basically told me that state form is the Cadillac of insurance plans. And I see state form labeled on all of our DOTD vehicles. So I'm just wondering how much money is this insurance commissioner getting from state form?
I got you. I, I just.
But honestly, I called, I called state form and I lowered it because they, they appraise your home every year. You're, I think you do insurance, right?
I did.
Okay. So they appraise your value and I'm not, my value was like at three hundred and seventy-five thousand. So I went down and I said, "This is what I built my home for. You need to kinda lower it down. I don't need all this." So they did. But that still goes up. And they find a way to increase your automobile insurance too. You know, I have three sons. As soon as I added that truck for my Otis, I mean, that was two hundred and eighty dollars a month just for him. And he, that was with good grades and, so it's a joke.
Let me answer the first part of the question. One. As far as it goes for fire protection, after meeting for seven years, after getting with Chief Benoit, the fire chiefs, Sonya, the ones in Carrington, Milton, all the fire chiefs, we meet once a month, once a quarter. And the insurance company and, uh, Mr. Jan Rishard, if you want to come and help me out here, he's the president of the Scott Fire Department and, uh, sits on it. And they have been working diligently and we have met several times, as well as Mr. Troy, as well as Mr. Dog, the whole, the whole, the whole situation. And where we live, we, on the unincorporated area, have been a class five. I can't answer why your homeowners might have went up this and that, but as far as the fire related, if it goes from a five to a seven, you and I have a choice to pay the two or three thousand dollars more a year.
So, but according to you, we're gonna pay you two thousand dollars more a year this next year because even if we vote for the fire, um, increase in taxes, it's still going?
If, if it goes to a seven, my insurance would have went up from thirty-one hundred to seventy-five hundred. So if it goes from a five to seven, mine was gonna be about forty-four hundred, okay?
So we don't know if it's going to a seven?
No. We do know that it's gonna be at least a six. That we do know. Which that rating from a five to six is gonna be an increase. Might be a thousand, fifteen hundred dollars.
So no matter what you vote, you're gonna pay for it for a year?
Yes, ma'am. No, 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 we're not quick enough. I, I brought this, Jay had brought this up about two, three years ago and we got outvoted. That's one of the votes that we left for the hard. The city at the time, he wasn't on the council. So, let me, let me just finish.
Can you share something that might be helpful? You're talking about the rating?
Yeah.
Ch- changing?
It's having for the rating is gonna be changing?
Right. He's not changing the rating. What it is, is the rating agencies that approach the communities and say, "If you don't have these hoses, these trucks, these radios way over above what you have now because of your size of your city, how you've grown and what's taking place, if you don't have those things..." Another example, the city of Scott, they're telling us, "We have to have a ladder truck. We don't have one right now. They're forcing us to buy this stuff. We don't have to. If we choose not to, because there's no money." They say, "Oh, it's okay. You couldn't afford it, it's all right."
So the city of Scott is gonna be a seven also?
No.
So, okay, so the city of Scott does support Lafayette Parish? That's, that's what you're saying?
Look, I'm gonna make, I'm gonna make it simple for you. I'm gonna let Jan, uh, chime in. Unincorporated areas are having service provided by the volunteers.
Absolutely. If you support them in raising, I probably don't pay the taxes for it enough, but...
And the small towns are responding, okay? That's who's providing you and I's protection.
Right.
The parish general fund is...
So what's the statistics on how many fires, like how many homes out of the, out of the Lafayette Parish areas? How many have burned to the ground that the city people couldn't get to? Like Dusong, Judy's, Scott? Or how many have, they had one in the city of Scott or in the city of Dusong and Lafayette Parish at the same time? Curious.
I don't know that answer. But I would, I can tell you is Scott, on average, is five hundred calls. Not including what they have to do for their own citizens. That's five hundred calls in the unincorporated area. Carrington's bumping two seventy, two eighty. Dusong's right behind them at two sixty. Judy's, who is volunteer only, is by two sixty, two seventy. The only towns that don't have the calls are Broussard and Youngsville. They only got two percent unincorporated area. So they might respond to a hundred and something calls in Broussard and maybe a hundred in Youngsville. The point is, you and I's future and our protection is based on what the parish general fund can continue to pay these people to come out and respond. So that insurance company, they got cut sixty percent, okay? So they come out and it's based on points. You get so many points if you got personnel, so many points for equipment, so many points for tanker trucks, and guess what? You get points for training. So if you could send somebody to get training, they look at that. You're educating your people, boom. That's how the rating is acquired. So to answer your question, your insurance, if it's been going up, I can't explain that. I can explain if it goes up again, that it's gonna go from a five to a six for one year. If it passes, then the following year, the money comes in and then things are in place to maybe go back to a five or maybe a four. But if you choose to vote no across the board, you're gonna be a six this year and potentially go a high six or seven the following year. And then that's where you're gonna be four thousand. Again, that's all based on, not your appraised value. That's based on the value on the Texas Tax Assessor's website, okay? So now Jan, you could chime in and, and, and explain exactly what kind of strain is going into the city of Scott.
Well, I mean, to make a long story short, I mean, speaking only from the Scott Volunteer Fire Department side of it, is we got a sixty-six percent cut over the last three years with an additional cut coming this year. Based on the early information from your budget. So we're talking about a potential eighty percent cut, okay? Our obligation as a fire board and as a fire department is to the city of Scott only. If we continue to get a decrease in funding from L C G in regards to providing protection in unincorporated areas, we can't do it, okay? So that's basically, to make a long story short, that, that's, that's the sum of it. We want to continue to provide, Robert lives out in unincorporated area, right outside Scott. We consider him a Scott resident. When we put our neck on the line a couple of years ago, saying we can't go out in unincorporated areas, it wasn't because we didn't want to. We want to provide the service. But I, I'm not gonna put my name, Troy wasn't gonna put his name, Chief Sonya's not gonna put it. I'm not putting my name to operate in the red because my commitment and my obligation as the fire board president is to the city of Scott. You know what I'm saying? So that, that's where we're at. And the rating, they, these guys can come up with something every year. P I L comes in, they're gonna say this year, hey, you need a ladder truck because you have four buildings over two stories. The next year, they may say, eh, you added one, so you need another ladder truck. We don't know how it, however they come in, they make changes all the time. And whatever changes that they make, you have to oblige by. And they give you a window to do it. And if you don't provide within that win, window, they're gonna penalize you for it. And that's basically how it goes.
Most times, the ratings last for five years, sometimes ten years. So you have to ask and request them to come back to re-rate you. And they have to say, "We're only gonna come back and re-rate you if you did something significant enough to justify going back down." So what's significant enough is now you have a fire district, which is dedicated for our area, unincorporated area. And then now you have a revenue stream. Well, that's significant enough for them to come back and re-rate us after this past year. If you do nothing, to Jan's point, that rating of a six or seven can stay with us for five years. Ain't nothing you can do about it. So that's why I push the fire district, firehouse, our subdivision, our area, my representatives is because regardless if you like me or not, regardless of what the situation is, you're gonna pay either one way or the other. And you have to decide, take the emotions out of it. It's either gonna, you know, you're getting service for free right now. Do we wanna pay two hundred dollars a year or do we wanna pay two thousand a year? Difference is, you may pay two thousand dollars a year and don't have a fire truck show up at your house. So for me to sleep at night, I need to bring it to the people. And there will be town hall meetings, if this council can approve it, on August seventh. And I will bring every fire chief and we will have town hall meetings to get the word out because not only does it help the unincorporated area, it helps the city of Scott because we got more equipment.
Kevin, I just want to add real quick, since we're talking fire insurance and so on and so forth, because I have a bunch of calls, people saying, "Well, we'll just move into the city of Scott. Y'all just come and annex it." It's not that simple because P I L, the insurance rating goes on population, area of response. So at the city of Scott, we have to be careful on how many we annex at one time because city of Scott could lose our rating. So it's not just a quick fix of, well, we'll just move into the city of Scott. Sounds great and I wish it could. And I wish it could be that way, but it's not that simple. Because the more land and area that we add into Scott affects our rating also, even though we do have a strong three. It doesn't take much to loop, especially in response time. And that's one of the biggest plus or minuses, whichever way it goes, that directly affects your rating is response time. And that's why we're being forced to add another fire station in the next three years on the north side of I-ten, the, uh, the ladder truck, like Councilman Basaral talked about. That's things we don't, we have a choice. Yet we don't have to get it, we don't have to build the new fire station. But you'll get penalized. You don't have to build it, but you're gonna lose your rating. But I just wanted to touch real quick.
No, you're right because one of our fellow, one of our fellow council members had said, "We can fix it all. We can fix it by every town, just annexing everybody, just divvy up on everybody." Well, one, you can't force ex, annexation on someone. And number two, the smaller towns, you'd be having to pay even more in that town because now Chief of Dusong, Chief of Scott has to go hire more policemen. And so you just can't divvy it up and, and, and put the responsibility on those, on those towns. That would be the easy thing. Draw a line, okay, Scott, this is yours now, Dusong, this is yours, Carrington. Well, what happens to those taxpayers that live in that community? Because now you're putting more strain on the fire and the police and the drainage and the services. And some small towns don't have equipment to, to go ahead and give them cool.
And it would be the easy thing to do, but it's not.
It's not possible.
Cut and dry, like you said. But it's not cut and dry, like you're saying, we don't support, um, the city of Scott Fire Department or the city of Dusong Fire Department, because we do. I, I know a lot of people over here know the size of my children. I shop at Nunu's daily. So I pay city of tax, um, city of Scott taxes daily. So kinda like, I, I know Jan and he's my friend, but him saying what he said is kinda like John Bel Air was telling me he's gonna take my grandma out to the nursing home. You know, it's like the red. And I don't, you know, that you're not gonna come and save my house because I'm in the unincorporated area. So as living in the unincorporated area, I feel like we're getting, um, told, like Mr. Basaral was saying, about our expenses have to go up, we're mandated. And our, um, in, you know, our income is not, my husband owns his own company. It's an all field service company, so you know the all field. But yet I've been paying my tax increases. I've been paying my insurance increases. And frankly, I have enough because I don't see anything being used with my tax monies that I'm paying today. Back to our subdivision. Who came and did our dishes in the front? I mean, you drive down the road, it's like you're living by Ufushon.
That's somebody that didn't call their councilman and decided to take matters on their own hand. They called the state behind my back. And the state went dig that because they were ticked off and somebody kept pushing on them and threatening them. So they just went out there and started digging. It wasn't elevated, it wasn't shot at all.
Okay, but it's been there for a year.
It's a state highway.
And it's full of mosquitoes. Thank God I don't live by that end. But another thing in our subdivision, I saw the other day, you had posted that you had three hundred and thirty-eight acres that are getting out of a flood zone here in Scott. Did you know that our subdivision's going into one in December?
Yeah.
Play, okay. So, but we didn't know. And I called, um, L C G today and I talked to a lady named Stephanie, who apparently she's getting lots of phone calls and she's been schooled very well because she started back in two thousand and six, how they've been having, um, the information listed on the FEMA website. Well, I don't go to FEMA website on a daily basis. I don't know who does. But that's where that was advertised, town hall meetings since two thousand and six. Never knew anything about that. And she says it's been held up because, um, a lot of the Broussard, Youngsville, the developments in Lafayette Parish that were being done, that the people did get flooded in August, they were taken out of that map of flood zones. However, our subdivision is, now it's the preliminary FEMA maps and it's gonna be in effect in December.
Yeah, I bought flood insurance.
I've been having flood insurance for ten years, that's not an issue. We're granted further in because it's a renewal on the insurance. The point is, our property value's gonna go down. And I realize you just sewed your home, so it may not matter to you, but it...
I didn't sell my one. I still live at two twenty seven.
Okay, well, I was told that you sewed it too.
Called me and I can educate you and tell you.
Well, I had put it on next door neighbor, I didn't hear from you. And they called me and told me you had sewed it. Somebody went play banco.
Kevin Thomas, the next door neighbor, sold his house. That's where all the construction is. It's next to me, but it's not mine. And the guy on the side of me sold his house too, but I'm still there.
Awesome. I'm still there too. And I still have water in front of my driveway that I talked to you about a couple of, um, years ago too, that stays and my road is eating away.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can get back, this is the topic because we pay taxes. But my, my point is that I pay taxes and I just want to see my tax dollars being worked for...
I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
Off topic, we're talking about charter amendments. You're talking about issues that you and I can have at a later date after this meeting. I'd be more than glad to help you. What I have to tell you though is, yeah, I pay taxes too and I shop in the city of Scott, but that doesn't give me the right to have free fire service and let the citizens of Scott pay from you and I's way, okay? The bottom line is, I, I pay the same thing as you do. But at the end of the day, I cannot use the statement that, because I go to Nunu's and I shop in here, that those dollars should be spent for my area. Those dollars, you're, you're, they're staying in the city of Scott. You have no source of revenue to take care of fire protection. That's why it's being created as a fire district. And that's why it has to be funded by you and I. Because guess what? People in Scott go to Tibbs Trailers. They, they, they go right down near you. But guess what? They still paying for their own fire protection. They're not asking the parish to come and put a fire out in Scott. That's, that's, that's what you gotta understand.
I live in Lafayette Parish. I mean, who, who, who did the math?
Let's go to lunch ten times and you buy my lunch all the time. You think that's fair?
Absolutely not.
Well, that's, that's the point. We're getting fire protection for free. We're getting fire protection for free, we're asking the city of Scott to come spell us out. And you know what, it doesn't matter how many houses burned to the ground or how many lives were lost. The bottom line is, one house and one life is too much to risk. That's the truth. You can't put a price tag on a house burning down and a life. So whether the statistics show that there's only one house in five years that burned to the ground in an unincorporated area, that's one house too many.
But you can't keep asking for more money from taxpayers.
I'm not asking you for more, I'm asking you to pay for your service. I'm asking you for the consider your choice. Where do you want, do you want to pay a tax to protect your house that's dedicated for us? Or do you want to pay two thousand or four thousand dollars increase on your insurance and have no response? That's not a threat. You can, if they don't show up, you can try to sue them. They're not obligated to show up at that house, period. Whether you like it or not, I don't like it either, but you know what? I teach my kids every day that if you want something in life, you gotta go to work for it, you gotta pay for it. We talk about how everybody in government and everybody gets stuff for free in this country, we gotta stop. Well, we want them. We're getting free fire protection. And we fighting about it.
Well, I mean, your analogies and your, what you're saying, you know.
It's not analogies for me, dear, it's the facts. I don't want your homeowners to go up and I don't want our house to be in a flood zone. You did the right thing by buying flood insurance years ago, I did too. Okay, but I can't control FEMA and flood maps. I can control only certain things. I give it up to the man upstairs, things I have no control over, it's out of my hands.
But who worked with the FEMA people? Engineers in Lafayette? I mean, you know that the concern, our drainage drains to Fieldspan, not to the Cooley in the back. And in August, one of the houses by Fieldspan flooded. Not by the Cooley, but the Cooley area is somewhere that's in the flood zone. I'm just curious, that's the kind of things that I have questions about.
And I want to help you, I want to help you, but this is not the time or place for it.
Everything that's happening in our government.
Look, I want to help you. And about your road in the front, the ditches and stuff, I'd be more than glad to follow up on a request of service. I can promise you, I'll put it in there. Now, just like everything else, so much misrepresentation of elected officials. Nobody calls me back, nobody does this, nobody. I can assure you, if you call my cellphone and you talk to me directly, I will be jumped through hoops to help you. But I don't follow the neighborhood ad, okay? And I have a phone number, and yes, I'm right there. I want to help you and I will, promise you, after this meeting, okay?
Okay, I'd love to see that.
All right, next.
Yeah, I'll go before you defend yourself. Okay, I heard someone over in this area talking about, when you put forth the fire district.
I almost gotta say, we gotta get off fire right here. Because we gotta stick to charter.
Let's talk about one thing.
These guys are gonna get mad at me and I can see that the next town hall meeting for fire protection is gonna be strictly fire. This is, we got people in here, we want to make sure we talk about it, this is getting out of hand.
Isn't it true, isn't it true that the council member from Youngsville voted against that?
That is true.
Okay, that's all I wanted to say. Not talking about anybody else, the council member from Youngsville, who has very little people in Lafayette voted against that. So just keep that in mind.
Okay, thank you.
Second thing is, I am very, very much in favor of this.
Thank you.
Ms. Hazel, you talked about, why did the city of Lafayette vote for consolidation? And everybody in the parish and the small towns did not? The mayor at the time was very, very controversial. And the deal was, almost everyone in the city thought that that mayor would immediately be out of office. That's why people who didn't know better voted for consolidation in the city of Lafayette. I was there, I saw it.
Thank you, next.
Candace, I just want, I'm not gonna get in a debate with you, I'm just gonna explain to you again. From a business standpoint, I represent the Scott Volunteer Fire Board, okay? Whatever dollars the city of Scott allocates towards fire protection can only be spent in the city of Scott. It's by law, it's a mandate. Listen, just follow, just follow me. What I'm talking about with the funding, what we're talking about with the tax, we're talking about the fact that we've got close to an eighty percent cut in our budget from the parish for fire protection in your area. If it keeps going down, we have no money to respond. That's where we're at. It has nothing to do with not wanting to respond. Trust me, I work with these guys, I see these farmers, and I have so much compassion and love for these guys because I know what they do. And I didn't realize the depth of the fire department until I got into it. So I have much, much respect. Trust me, those guys, they want to go out there. We can't afford to if we don't have the funds. That's, it's as simple as that. It's not not wanting you, it's because we're not, we're obligated with city dollars to use in the city, and we're obligated with parish dollars to use in the parish. If we don't have any funds, or we have X twenty thousand dollars, so let's just say it's twenty thousand dollars they give us. Once that twenty thousand dollars runs out, what do you want us to do? We operate in the red and jeopardize the rest of the people in the city of Scott? Rating going up? And by breaking the law, by using our city dollars in the parish, we can't do it. And that's basically where we're at. Okay, on topic, I have a question.
Yeah.
Okay. You mentioned earlier about the annexation, you talked about annexation and maybe doing some revenue sharing. Is the verbiage in this particular?
No, no.
It's not in it, or are you looking at bringing it in there?
Yeah, well.
I just want, the reason I'm bringing it up is because I want to make sure that if y'all are gonna plan on doing it, that you inform the public that you're gonna do that.
Absolutely, and Jan, that's a great, great point. I might have talked out of, you know, I got these visions of how to fix things and sometimes I run. At the end of the day, my point about the revenue sharing and the stuff that's going on in Saint Tammy Parish is if we can get this done.
Right.
Then, at some point, that new parish council should have that discussion, should go out to those towns, should talk and get the right verbiage to do a revenue sharing.
Right.
But in this current format, what you're gonna be voting on potentially has, does not exist. And I'll tell you why. Because in this current format, I have, I can't do that to the city, I can't tell the city of Scott, you're gonna share that revenue, okay? But as a parish council now, I have every right to come in and implement a parish ordinance or law because the parish council should be the strongest government to say, in the future, at that point when that happens, that is when that gets addressed. In its current format, it was considered, but there's nothing we can do. I had no binding authority to tell the city of Scott, when you annex this, you're gonna pay or do something. So that's something in the future, something that I've already started thinking about, helping or how do you stop the bleating to where you're not in that situation? But to answer your question, it's not in this.
Okay, I just, I didn't know if it was gonna be in the verbiage or if it wasn't.
No, what will be in the verbiage, to clarify, is the terminus.
Right.
That's in the.
Yeah, but I think it's something that y'all really need to bring to the table, assuming that this passes, to the table to, for a potential revenue stream.
No, that's the first priority that I would have, you know, and if it happens, you know.
Right.
We never said that? January twenty twenty would be when the new council would take office.
One quick comment, I lived in the city of Lafayette, I own property in Scott. I worked for the city of Lafayette for nineteen years, I worked for the Lafayette Consolidated Government for fourteen years, and I've worked for the great city of Scott for six years, and I fully support this proposal.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Kevin, my, trying to put it together, so for twenty-two years, we've been on an uneven playing field, what you've been telling us, five to four.
Based on the ordinances that we.
Yeah, so now we'll have our own councilman, five, and the city will have five.
Yes, sir.
So we'll be on an even playing field.
Yes, sir. Your representation, Brother John, would be your Scott City Council, because you pay the city of Scott some taxes.
Right.
And then on your parish property taxes, if we need to address something, then I'll, I think.
So my first call is to Mr. Boudreaux.
And then your second call, good Lord willing, if you guys don't throw me out, would be me.
Thank you, bud, you got my vote.
Thank you.
Okay, Kevin, what y'all are proposing, if I understand it correctly, you're gonna have one governmental entity, Lafayette Parish Government, two councils. One council does not answer to the other council, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, each council has their own checkbook.
Each council, yeah, not council member, but each.
Or their own budget, I should say.
Yeah, just like today, just like today.
The parish revenues.
Yes, sir.
Go to the parish council.
Yes, sir.
Okay, the city of Lafayette revenues go to the city council.
Yes, sir.
It's kind of like the old police jury system that we replaced. You're still gonna have two separate heads, just like you had back then.
Well, minus a parish president, I think there was a parish.
Well, you're saving a little bit there, and then you're adding a little bit of expense with a fifth councilman.
Yes, sir.
Okay, now, the problem that you're presenting to us, it, what's creating this shortage of money is annexation. That's what's taken away from the parish.
In overdue time, I'm not saying that is the main cause as of today because I don't think annexations have been happening as often because it's only rooftops, and let's face it. Cities are not gonna go get rooftops because it requires more police and fire. But if there's a business, they're gonna go get the sales tax revenue. So for example, right now, we hardly see any annexations coming to this council. But the annexation over time has caused where we at today.
Well, I know that if you go, you know, to other municipalities, you know, the boundary line between two cities is just a sign on the side of the road. Because of annexation eventually just ate up the entire country and, which would, eventually would just eat up all the parish, you'd just end up with the cities here.
Yeah.
Of course, that's gonna probably be way off in the future, but, you know.
And you know, to answer that question, as that takes place, that's less burden on the parish general fund. As far as for some of these obligations, because, you know, I'm talking about, I was gonna talk about fire protection, but I'm off of that. But what I was about to say was, one of the questions somebody brought up was, you create this district and you have all this money, you're gonna create this surplus. No, because as people get annexed into those towns, that money goes away, anyway.
Okay, well then, I just have one little simple question. You know, I realize we're all, you know, this is about no money, and everybody knows the city of Scott has money. And it's because of the great leadership we've had in the past with the former mayor. And being conservative, we just don't spend, you know, foolishly, we're very responsible. That's why we have money, and we intend to keep it. I don't know why the other municipalities don't have money. We've all gone through the same economy, up and down. I'm not gonna, you know, imply anything that, you know, somebody else is not doing their job right or something of that nature. But all I want to make sure of is that what y'all are proposing doesn't touch the money from Scott.
Money from Scott will, it can't be touched. The only thing that can happen is the city of Scott can help participate in parish taxes or parish revenue sharing. That's what the city of Scott can do. So basically, for example, no, I'm not gonna go back and say, city of Scott, you owe the parish X amount. I'm saying in the future, if there's a way to do a revenue sharing, that's when the city of Scott is not gonna be taken away. That's gonna be sharing future sales tax revenue as you annex those businesses. That's not taken away from the city of Scott, that's not the intention, that's not the plan. The plan is really to pull together.
Okay, well, if we go to work for it, y'all go to work for it, y'all got your money, we got ours.
Yeah, we're not trying to take away from the municipality. If anything, Dan, we're trying to put money back in your municipality for the fire protection.
Okay.
Like music, that's right, some rock.
Okay, thank you, Kevin.
All right, thank you. All right, it's getting late, and everyone has had a chance to speak. I thank you for coming out. Mr. Radek, you had spoke earlier, sir. You want, we can talk.
Somebody else people spoke too. Somebody else people spoke earlier too.
All right, go ahead.
Okay, now, Kevin, you're talking about this annexation and stuff like that, to stop this year, you can go split the pot, half and half, when you annex what's coming up, that's what you're trying for.
We're not trying for it right now, that's.
No, that's something that's gonna be coming up later, if you split it like this. But, you know, like Scott and all them, small community, Deux-Song, the annexing. What about Lafayette, you got five for you, five for the city. What makes you think that you can control Lafayette because they're gonna come out, oh, we're consolidating, so we're not splitting apart?
Oh, no, no, they were saying, the rule, Mr. Radek, the rule would apply for the city of Lafayette and all municipalities. So whether Bruce likes it or not, he don't have power over the parish council. The parish council passes an ordinance and says it's revenue sharing from Lafayette and all towns, he can cry wolf all he want, he can ride his bike wherever he wants to ride it. He ain't getting no more than what everybody else is gonna get, it's gonna be a split pot.
Yeah, well, why don't y'all take it like this here, if it's all that, just leave everything the same the way it is, except freeze annexation until the municipality with everyone's closest can supply your water and your sewer, and then they annex. Until they can't supply that, they can't annex. That way you won't be like city of Lafayette going all over the place.
I hear you.
The city of Bruceard, y'all back up and think, who paid for, the city of Bruceard to put in, I mean Ambassador Caffrey that run through and stuff like that? Bruceard paid for that Lafayette share of money, Bruceard paid for it. And stuff, and then as soon as that happened, like that, they run Ambassador Caffrey right there. Y'all went, the city of Lafayette went and annexed all about a golf course.
Everybody has done it, and it's so, and there's no fault in that, I'm not blaming just Scott. Everybody has did their fair share of annexing. This focus is not have really nothing to do with annexing, it just gives you an opportunity to set things in place that can stop bleeding the parish by doing this. If you keep it in its current format, then there's, annexation can take place all day long because I can't tell the city of Lafayette, I can't tell Scott, I can't. But if you don't put this charter together and you don't change it, you're not given the opportunity to set things in place.
But everything was there like that, for Ambassador Caffrey. Lafayette, city of Lafayette did not put nothing into Ambassador Caffrey, city of Bruceard put it.
All right.
And so, and the city of Lafayette took it on one side. Then Youngville and Bruceard took it up, like that. But after the city of Lafayette started doing it.
I got you, okay.
You know, so that's where, there's money going and stuff like that there. If, I gotta pay for my own stuff, I gotta pay for my taxes, I'm having a hard time paying for my taxes, mostly it's my gas, my vehicle, mostly it's food. So I gotta cut back on what I eat, different things I eat, I gotta drop my house insurance down and stuff like that where I go for it. Then if, everybody has a thing to do, they could drop their insurance at all.
Yeah.
To live.
Yeah.
But if we drop our property tax and do not pay our property tax, tell me what happens to our property? If I don't pay my property tax, what happens to my property?
They're gonna come get you.
So I lose it because of the government passing more taxes and everything else. So I don't have no way, no way to win with the government, right?
Well, we talk after a while, okay?
Talk after a while.
We're talking after a while, appreciate it. We've been here a while, thank you, Mr. Radek, thank you, everyone for coming. I agree. So listen, I enjoy doing town hall meetings, and I know everybody has their opinions in that, but you know what? It's people like Jay and Bruce that come over here, myself, to educate you, to give you the facts, for you to understand the right information so you can make a good conscious decision. I am not here to buffalo anybody, and I'm not here just to have a meeting. I'm here because it's important that we all understand what's going on. So I will engage, and I will, when it comes down to fire protection, I will have some town hall meetings all over this parish to stress the importance of it. But at the end of the day, thank you for coming out tonight, thank you for your input, thank you for being here, thank you AOC, thank you Kyle, thank you Bruce, thank you Jay. Thank you, appreciate it. Have a good night, if you need to meet me one-on-one, I'm available. Other than that, the meeting's over.